Good afternoon. I will call the May 23, 2024, meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission to order. Before we begin, I just want to go over a few housekeeping items. So if anyone in the audience has a cellphone, please silence or turn off your phones. If you're here to speak on an item and are not the applicant, please fill out one of the forms from staff related to the item that you'd like to speak to and provide that to staff. When that item is heard, you will be called upon. Please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak on the item. And we ask that you refrain from speaking from the gallery. If you're here to speak on an item with a large group of folks, we encourage you to elect a representative to share your group's concerns. Some additional time will be given to those speakers in that instance. Were several speakers on the same item heard? Please do your best to limit your comments to concerns we haven't heard yet, and we reserve the right to limit extensive and repetitious comments to keep the meeting moving. Please direct all your comments to the commission. If needed, we will ask staff or the applicant to respond. Finally, we appreciate everyone's presence today and the time taken away from work and other obligations. We kindly ask for your cooperation in upholding the decorum of the meeting, and let's engage in constructive dialogue that fosters understanding and progress for all involved. So thank you for your attention and understanding and assistance. With that, we'll move to item two of the agenda, which is the receipt of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes of the May 9 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion from Commissioner Govine to receive the minutes of the May 9 meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. Takes us to item three, continuance requests.
We have several uncontested requests. Item 24 is case PUD 2001 requested deferred to June 13. Item 26, case SPOD 1616 deferred to June 13. Item 27, CPA 2023-5 deferred to June 13. Item 28, PC 10932 deferred to June 13. Item 29, case PC 10931 deferred to June 27. And item 30, case SPOD 1629 has been withdrawn.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on any of those items? All right. Seeing none, I just need a motion.
I'll move to approve the uncontested requests.
Commissioner Govine moves to approve the uncontested requests. Need a second. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And those continuous requests are granted. New requests.
We have two new requests. Item 19, case PUD 2006 requested deferred to June 13. And item 25, SPOD 1597 requested deferred to July 25.
Is anyone here to speak on those two items?
What was the first one? I'm sorry.
Item 19, PUD 2006.
The second one?
The second one is case 25, item 25.
Second one is our...
They actually changed. Yeah, yeah.
All right. No one here to speak on those two items? Do we have another item to add to that?
Hello. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of Mr. Zitzau, and we hereby request withdrawal of item 23.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak on item 23? Okay. So I just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the new requests as read into the record, delaying number 19, number 25, and number 23 to be withdrawn. 19 and 25 are postponed.
So we did have someone signed up to speak on item 19, Mrs. Rhonda Hummel. Mrs. Hummel, if you'd like to speak, you may, but this item has been deferred.
I'll defer.
Okay. All right. So had a motion from Commissioner Govine. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the new requests are granted. So item four is the consent docket.
Item one on the consent docket is case C 7659, final plat of cottages at The Grove, located northwest 178th Street and east of North Portland Avenue. Item two is case C 7658, final plat of Canyon Ridge Estates, Section 2, located southwest 44th Street and east of South Sarah Road. Item three, case C 7656, final plat of Antler Creek Phase 1, located south of Covell Road and east of North May Avenue. And item four is case C 7639, final plat of Buffalo Farms Phase 1, located southwest 29th Street and east of South County Line Road.
Okay. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on any of those items. Just to confirm that no one would like to speak on the consent docket? All right. Just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent docket as read.
The motion from Commissioner Govine to approve the consent docket is read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Consent docket passes. Takes us to items requiring a separate vote. First up is item five.
Item five is case C 7615, preliminary plat of Brownfield. This is located north of West Hefner Road and east of North Mustang Road, along with a variance to Section 5.3.1. D. 8 of the subdivision regulations.
Hello. Cory Peacock, 5405 North Dewey Avenue. This is the preliminary plat of Brownfield that we have brought back to you guys, keeping it zoned as R1. We're proposing 66 single-family homes, and we are more than willing to comply with the technical evaluations that were recommended by staff. And so if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
You need the variance, correct? Do you need the variance for the street names? You don't? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. We will need to change the street names. I'll change them to comply with the ordinances.
Okay. So you won't need the variance?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay. This is my ward. I don't have any questions. I'm in support of the application. So if no variance is needed, then we just need to hear a motion.
Nobody signed up to speak?
I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay. I will move approval of item C 7615, including the six technical evaluations, as included, with no need for variance on item number two.
I have a motion to approve item C 7675, subject to the technical evaluations from Commissioner Govine. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
I'm sorry. Can you say C 7615?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good luck with your project. Takes us to item six.
This is PUD 1577-SP04, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1577, located at 14840 Gambles Trail Drive.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzau with Johnson &amp; Associates. Address is 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Before you is a small residential-style office building in the Quell Lakes Office Park. It's a continuation of the development. It conforms with all sections of the PUD, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Noble, this is your ward.
Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No.
It's consistent with the existing PUD, so unless anyone else has anything to say, I'd recommend approval of PUD 1577-SP04.
Commissioner Noble recommends to approve PUD 1574-SPO4. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. Item seven.
This is PUD 2011, application to rezone 14700 Mezzaluna Avenue from PUD 1961.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD. When you look at the exhibit before you, we are rezoning the kind of inner ring of an existing neighborhood. It's already been platted. What is allowed now under the current PUD are a series of quadplexes. What we're seeking to do is modify it to duplexes per lot rather than quadplexes because of some permitting issues that we ran into. Doesn't change the density, doesn't change the concept of the development. No technical evaluations. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Noble?
Has anyone signed up to speak on this one?
No, I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
And I don't have any problem with it. I'm in support of the application. Anyone else?
Any other commissioners have questions? No? All right.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of PUD 2011.
A motion from Commissioner Noble to recommend city council approval of PUD 2011. It's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes when available.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to item eight.
Item eight is CPA 2024-3, consideration of a proposed amendment to the Conference of Plan, changing the land use topology area designation from rural low to urban low on a 20-acre parcel south of northwest 164th Street and east of North Mustang Road.
Baneri Moji Cortiz for the planning department. So we have CPA 2024/03. The request is to amend the comprehensive plan use, changing the rural low luta designation to urban low luta designation. The associated application is PC 10930. The location is east of North Mustang Road, south of 164. The 16 condition, the line use right now, is undeveloped. To the west is residential, to the north is PUD. The zoning right now is agricultural. To the west is agricultural, to the north and east is PUD 1992. In terms of the luta, right now is rural low. The applicant is proposing to extend the city water to the site. The applicant is proposing to extend the city sewer to the site, too. In terms of emergency services, this site is within the rural response time for fire emergency services. Some of you might look in the website for Plan OKC, and it might look like it's in the longer-than-rural response time, but we are using the new models that we are running, and that's why the site is in the rural response time. With the findings, the applicant is proposing to extend city water and sewer services. The western part of the site is located within rural response time for fire emergency services. Due to the proximity to the city borders, there are not expectations of changes in the level of emergency services in this area. Because of these findings, the staff recommends approval to this request. I don't know if you have any questions.
This is my ward. Thank you for the presentation. I think, given those findings, it makes perfect sense. So I'm in support of it. Happy to hear from any other commissioners? No questions, comments? Okay? Just need to...
Yeah. I mean, I don't have an issue, but when applicants are proposing to extend city water and sewer services, is there any concern that they come back with a different application and then propose a development that is on wells or septic? Does that form a requirement for the applicant in any way, that proposal?
So that's a great question. Mark Zitzau, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. In this particular case, all of the surrounding developments have brought the utilities to the property line, so we're actually within the required extension distance. So we're unable to bring back something that doesn't connect without variances from you all.
Okay. Thank you.
And furthermore, I would say that once it's designated UL, it's supposed to be, you know, the plan calls for it to be zoned to an urban zone, which would then require...
They wouldn't have that option?
Yeah. They shouldn't, wouldn't have that option.
Okay.
I'll move to, just allow, am I recommending or moving? Sorry. Move approval of CPA 2024-03.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Govine to recommend approval of city council of CPA 2024-03. Seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. That item passes. Item nine.
This is the associated zoning application for the last item, case PC 10930, application to rezone 15729 Greenwood Circle from AA to R1.
Mark Zitzau, Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. This is the associated zoning case. The map that I brought, what this is depicting, is the Jackson Creek Development, which is under construction, Green Hill Development is under construction, and the Rosewood Plat that you all approved about a month ago at the preliminary plat stage. What's highlighted in blue are all of the connection points and stub streets that have connected the whole section. So now, what you'll be able to do is go from Sarah Road over to Mustang Road up to 164th without having to leave the neighborhood. So these four developments now have full interconnectivity. Happy to answer any questions.
This is my ward. I don't have any questions. I support the application, so I'd like to hear if any other commissioners have questions or comments? None? Okay. Just need a motion?
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to move approval of PC 10930.
A motion to recommend approval of city council, item PC 10930. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes when available. That item passes.
Thank you.
Item 10.
This is case PC 10934, application to rezone 7475 Southwest 15th Street from R1 and SRO to I2 and SRO.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. The application before you is to rezone this site to I2. It's unclear why the site that's surrounded by I2 and abuts one of the largest landfills that we have in our city is zoned R1 single-family, but it is. So here we are. I2, we believe, to be much more appropriate and consistent with the area. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Meek, this is your ward.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. I've spoke with the applicant. I believe this is just fixing something that needs fixed. It's been like this for a while, and I believe the R1 that would be left beside it is in the process of also being fixed. So unless any other commissioners have any questions... We don't have anyone signed up to speak, do we?
No, not on this side.
Well, with that being said, I'd like to recommend approval of PC 10934.
The motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend approval of city council of item PC 10934, been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes when available.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item 11.
Item 11 is case C 7660, final plat of Council Ridge North 2, located south of northwest 164th Street and west of North Council Road.
Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, Arch Engineering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road in Edmond. This is a 37-acre development at the southwest corner of 164th and Council. We are requesting to split this area up into four separate lots with a collector road and a common area. This area is zoned under PUD 240. Lot 1 is zoned under C3 commercial. It's 5.96 acres and will be a future restaurant retail commercial-type development. Lot 2, we're proposing to do a self-storage type facility that hope to start on here in about a month. Lot 3 is 11.66 acres. It's zoned under R4, and this is a multifamily tract that I'm working on now that we'll have a multifamily development there. Lot 4 is also zoned under R4 at 7.12 acres, and it will be a future R4 multifamily-type development, according to the PUD. Did receive some neighborhood emails, protest emails, from Council Ridge neighbors to the south. A lot of their emails had to do requesting that this area not be rezoned. We are not requesting rezoning here today. We are only requesting the final plat. As I mentioned, this area was zoned under PUD 240, which was approved in 1985, so it's been in place for quite some time. Another concern that the neighbors had had to do with the existing Council Ridge amenities, and this area will be its own development, its own property owners' association. They'll have their own amenities, so they will not be using the existing Council Ridge amenities. But with that, we'd ask for your approval, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. This is my ward. So what I did want to emphasize, and you brought it up, is that we are not considering rezoning. This has been zoned for nearly 40 years. So the land uses being proposed are approved and appropriate for this. What is before us today, and the only thing that we have purview to approve, is where those land uses occur within the parcel. And so with that, I know we have a few folks lined up to speak. Do commissioners have any comments or questions? Want to hear from those signed up to speak? All right. First, I have Ada Perman.
Okay. And I live at 8013 Northwest 161st Terrace. It's going to bump right up against me.
Okay.
And one of the things I, well, there's several things I have problems with, is the traffic, that it's going to increase. They're two-lane roads. We already have more traffic than we can deal with. The city has not seemed fit to make the roads larger, but we need it. And I also have a lot of questions I'd like to ask about the apartment complexes that there...
Okay. Yeah, you can ask them.
Yeah.
Please direct your questions to us, and then we'll ask the applicant to respond.
One of the questions I have is, the apartment complex, the first one and three, are they going to, what is the occupancy that they are expecting? And are they, are they going to allow things like dogs and cats and animals? I also wanted to know how many parking spots per apartment? How many apartments and how many people in each apartment? I guess is one of the things I want to know.
I can't speak for them. I suspect it's a little early to have that information. What they hear before us today is basically to approve it as a multifamily use. Generally, those details, that information comes along later, and that's not something that we, you know, in this case, you know, require to approve the land use.
Does somebody have to approve of exactly what the apartments and everything are going to be?
Yeah. There's city processes in place when they go to pull, you know, to pull development plans, that all that gets reviewed.
Well, is there a way for us to protest or find out what they're going to do?
You'd have to contact city staff for that.
Okay. Anyway, I'm still against it.
Okay. Thank you. David Moritz?
I'm at 16120 Mendoza Drive, so the very far north end of Mendoza that would back right up to this. The main complaint that I had, so from the letter that we got in the mail, we, to my knowledge, were not able to see which of the four parcels of land would be what specifically. And so I think a lot of residents would agree, but my one ask is that one and two be zoned for the multifamily, so that the residents backing up to 161st and Mendoza and everywhere around that curve don't have a two-story or three-story building looking into them. I'm not here to just, you know, say multifamily housing's bad. I understand it has a purpose, but to have it, four parcels, we've got a nice square there, and to have it as close to the houses as possible? I understand there's going to be a little bit of road, probably some trees, but to have the tallest thing possible there, or I assume what is the tallest possible with people living in a second or third story to be able to look down into someone's backyard, fences are only five or six feet high. I understand you mentioned, you know, we're not here to rezone this land, but to look at moving those parcels around would be my first and foremost complaint as a resident there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming down. Deisha Kovac?
My name's Deisha Kovac. I live on 159th Street in Council Ridge, and we are opposing the multifamily homes being zoned in there. As a parent of a Deer Creek school student, their schools are already at as max capacity as we can be. Our buses can't run properly, or even with as many kids as we have in our neighborhood as is. With it being a two-lane road, the amount of traffic that already comes through there is just not feasible to have more traffic coming through there with multifamily homes and with how many, the uptick of cars that will be coming through, driving through the neighborhood to get through those areas. Like David said as well, you know, seeing into people's backyards, things like that, that just initially, when the developer was showing us the plats, showing us the areas, he even showed us a plat for this area that was single-family residential homes. So the fact that we feel lied to for the last several years, that that was never their intention to use that area for single-family homes, but he's been telling us for years that that's what it would be, I understand that's not, you know, something that we can fully oppose and something that has been changed before, or I guess not changed, in a very long time. But the multifamily homes is an issue for the families that are currently already living there in Council Ridge. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And last, I have Rebecca Farish.
I live on 159th Street as well. Deisha and I actually used to serve on this HOA board. We had many complaints regarding what could be going in this area, many questions about what it could be. many questions about what it could be. Like Deisha said, we all feel lied to. We were all told it was, or, single-family homes. I guess part of a big concern is, A, the current infrastructure cannot handle multifamily homes. It's two lanes, both directions, with a four-way stop at that corner, same as the intersection at 150th and Council. If my husband and I leave for work later than 7:00, that stop sign heading southbound has cars backed up all the way to our neighborhood, which is half a mile. It just, it's not feasible for more traffic, more traffic to go to that area. I did talk to Dr. Perez with the superintendent of the Deer Creek School District. There are a lot of concerns with multifamily homes, increasing the current student body. I mean, it was, our district was already projected to grow, to grow, adding, in the, in the next 10 years, adding up to 10,000 students per, like, at 10 years, it was like, I think 10,000 students or something was the projected growth for the next 10 years. I mean, right now, we have, I think about five buses that go to various schools in our district that come through our neighborhood that are already at capacity. The, there are kids sitting in the walkway of the buses. There's three kids to a seat, and we're on a shortage of bus drivers. I mean, that's going to put a hardship back on the district with the transportation, hiring bus drivers, and then it, you know, also to take into consideration the classroom sizes. I mean, currently, classroom sizes are between 23 and 28 per, per teacher. If we increase that even more, you know, we're going to have to hire new teachers, which we're on a teacher shortage, especially here in Oklahoma. You know, people are, teachers are leaving our state, so we're, you know, it's already shortage. Another thing, potential crime increase statistically, where there are storage units that are built, crime increases. It's a very easy way for somebody to online rent a storage unit, back up their truck, and cut off, cut off bolts, and take out, you know, all the storage. That increases the crime in our rate, you know. It's, it's nice to think that, oh, people won't do that, but, I mean, it happens. So anyhow, thank you.
That's everyone that I have signed up to speak. Questions or comments from commission? I jotted down a few notes that I'd, and I'll ask the applicant to come back up here in a minute, but just, you know, this is my ward, so I want to, you know, I heard about roads and infrastructure as a concern, the schools as well. And I don't know if anyone is in the know on if Council or 164th is being considered for the next bond program to be expanded, but that might be helpful information to know, if that could be coming down the line. It's not, it's not on the list, I'm told. So generally, what we see in these instances is that the development drives those, those types of improvements. It's not ideal. I know existing residents want to see that stuff in place before that new development comes along, but that's just not how the process that we have in place right now works. Usually, it's the rooftops come in, and then the improvements to infrastructure follow when there's increased tax base. As, as it relates to schools, you know, it's, the Oklahoma City School, or Oklahoma County schools are in, you know, kind of a state where everything is stressed. So that's unfortunately not something that we have under our purview, and, and something to consider is that we continue to have a residential housing shortage, and I don't believe that we can, you know, hold up development and wait for schools to catch up. So I don't believe, you know, holding that development is, is something to consider. So, but that was my, that was my few thoughts on the items that I heard. So, did you want to respond to anything?
I was gonna, I was gonna just add in there on, before the applicant, we turned it over, turned the floor over, was, there was that comment about where the different uses on which parcels, that you might want to comment on.
Yeah, that's what I was going to comment on, too. That is locked in, unfortunately, according to the PUD. That is outlined with legal descriptions. You know, this, this area, lots 1 and 2 are zone C3, and the rest around it is zoned R4. So moving it around would mean rezoning, basically.
Yeah, and I will add, I mean, that is kind of planning 101. Any restaurant, retail, you put on the hard corner, and then you buffer from single-family residential with less intense uses such as multifamily. So it's, it's very common and typical to see that, that layout.
I would point out, too, that there is a collector road going through here that, that goes from northwest 164th, south, and then east over to Council Road, so it kind of backs up to the Council Ridge development. That's a 60-foot wide right-of-way there. There's about another 20 feet, I think, of common area between the street right-of-way and those backyards, plus building limit line of probably 15 feet. So you're looking at 95, 100 feet before you get to any buildings. So I don't know what's going in Lot 4 yet, but even if it were two- or three-story buildings, it's, it's quite a ways away from the residential lots, so.
All right, this is Ward 1. I'm unable to make a motion, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask legal, if I could. My sense about things like infrastructure exterior to the property, school district impact, all those kinds of considerations may be appropriate through the zoning process, but once we come down to plating, we really are tied pretty closely to the subdivision regulations and the codes, and that it's, it's not really possible for us to deny a plat based on, you know, lack of exterior infrastructure, or, or impact on schools, or even impact on surrounding properties. Is that accurate? Am I, am I?
No, I, I think you stated that very well. If, you know, reading through your staff report, I think largely, and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, we're, we're looking for, is this in accordance with the PUD that has already been recommended for approval here and adopted by City Council? So that, that's kind of what we're looking at, and, and yeah, you put it far more eloquently than I typically can, and there's just not a whole lot to do at this stage.
Thank you.
Sounds like they need a stoplight instead of a four-way stop, and probably some other road improvements. But outside of our purview today, the development's in line with the PUD. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, to rec, sorry, this is actual approval, not recommending approval, so I will move to approve C 7660.
Motion from Commissioner Govine, recommend approval of C 7660. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Item 12.
Item 12 is SPUD 1615, application to rezone 1443 Northwest 33rd Street from R1.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application along Northwest 33rd Street, just west of Classen. That would allow a series of duplexes to be built. We did work with staff and Commissioner Powers, back and forth on language for the SPUD to a point where I think everybody was satisfied. That resulted in a staff report with no technical evaluations. It is in the urban medium LUDA, so the density proposed is in line with the density calculations expected in that, in that LUDA. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm not aware of any protest.
Commissioner Powers, this is your ward.
We, we were, as Mr. Box indicated, able to, to discuss this and, and work through issues, and I am satisfied with where we are at the moment. So if there's not someone signed up who wishes to speak...
We do have a couple signed up to speak.
Let's hear from them.
All right. Amber Nelson.
Hi, good afternoon. Amber Nelson, 1444 Northwest 34th Street. First, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I'm an attorney here in Oklahoma City, but here today on a personal matter. My backyard backs up to these subject properties. We've been there for nearly 18 years, and the rezoning would drastically impact the character of our community. Our neighborhood is currently composed of single-family homes with big yards, which provides a peaceful cohesive environment. In fact, the size of each of the properties is something that distinguishes us from other historical neighborhoods in the urban core. Introducing a housing complex like this will increase density, leading to higher traffic volumes, noise levels. This will disrupt the tranquility that we currently enjoy. The plan to exceed the allowable 50% lot coverage standard by an additional 25% tells you that the applicants are not interested in the open spaces between the houses that we're accustomed to. There's no going back from a zoning change like this. These homes are over 100 years old and have housed families over the years. To rezone these opportunities, this group wants to pack 12 people in on these spaces on top of each other, and, and the cost of losing a piece of our history. The current structures are in disrepair, that's not a question, but the plan is not, this plan does not seem to be the improvement that is needed, or, and it is in stark contradiction to the city's preservation initiative. We're concerned about the impact on property values. The introduction of high-density housing often leads to a decrease in property values. This devaluation not only affects my property, but also my neighbors' properties. And, you know, we're in the heart of some of the most exciting growth in Oklahoma City, and we feel like this would be a backslide for that. The environmental impact also should not be ignored. We're concerned that, you know, the infrastructure, sewers, waters, road, those things will not be able to support this increased density as well. There's a housing complex just on the corner of McKinley and 30th, just a couple of blocks from this proposed plan complex, and it's been a hotbed for criminal activity for a very long time. And so, you know, I think the concern is that this complex would also breed that type of criminal activity. And I do have a question to the applicants of whether their intent is to allow subsidized housing here. I believe the character of our historical neighborhood, the value of the properties, and the well-being of our community should take precedence over the proposed development. And while our area has plenty of room for improvement, it should be done in a manner that is congruent with the initiative of the neighborhood at large, and not just the, to maximize the profits of a few. I urge you to consider the long-term impacts that this will have to our community, and reject this rezoning proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next I have, and I'm going to apologize in advance for mispronouncing this last name, Ms. Sarah Biddy.
Sarah Bitucci. I own the property at 1440 Northwest 34th Street, which is the third from McKinley East, directly backing up to this property. And I appreciate you hearing me today. I have some concerns about a lot of things, actually, but going from two units to 12 units seems to add a lot of noise. This property that I own is a historic property. It was built 100 years ago and enjoys, you know, big porches, and that big porch in the backyard, and it's really part of the charm and character of the block on 34th Street. And I feel that adding 12 units directly behind would increase the noise. It would also devalue my property value. Backing up to a commercial-type structure would change the use of my backyard. I would no longer be able to enjoy the quiet like it was if it were a single-family structure that's currently there now. I'm also concerned for the concrete that would be involved in the type, this type of development, and what that would do to the surrounding yards and the drainage, how that would impact absorption over time. I do believe there's already a traffic issue on this block of 33rd Street. Immediately on the corner of Southwest Classen and 33rd, there is a very popular restaurant, and they do not have adequate parking as is. So all along 33rd Street, cars are parked all the way to McKinley most days, and then on the weekends, even beyond that. So adding, you know, 12 additional units seems to be like it would be increasing an already congested area. And for those reasons, I strongly urge you to reject the plan as proposed. I feel that there's other sites in the neighborhood that would be better accommodating for this type of development, and that we should really protect the interior lots as single-family. I can appreciate having accessory units, but this is beyond that scope, in my opinion. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up to speak.
So briefly, it's not, there's nothing about this that, that makes it historic. The city has overlays in place in various parts of the city that designate it historic, which then requires you to go to the Historic Preservation Committee before you do anything. My client has not owned this very long. It has been dilapidated for quite some time. In fact, when my client acquired it, the city then began a process of declaring it dilapidated to try to demolish the home on their own. We, of course, intend to demolish them, and so we would be alleviating that problem with, with our proposal. In terms of crime, I'm unaware of any study that would say people that live in duplexes somehow inherently are criminals and therefore commit crimes when compared to those who live in single-family homes. Perhaps there's a study I'm not aware of. And again, in terms of the density, the staff recommends approval because it is in conformance with the density calculation within the urban medium LUDA. So have any answered any questions? Happy to hear what Commissioner Powers would like to do. There were not any protest letters submitted, so we weren't aware of this until right now.
I would like to see us perhaps continue this for weeks, take some time, meet with the neighbors, see if we have heard all their concerns, and if we can address those in a way that would be satisfactory, not come to some sort of compromise. I'm curious with staff. When I first looked at this, I was a little taken aback, I guess, with the maximum lot coverage of 75%, which is noted in the staff report, but there's no TE for that. So I was wondering, is, is there something about the configuration or the size of the units, which I also kind of stumbled over in my brain, whether we're talking about footprints or total of both upper and lower stories? 75% seems like a lot of lot coverage to me. Does staff want to speak to that issue?
Sure. Sarah Welch, Planning Department. Over the years with our infill projects in the core, one of the compatibility triggers is a significant difference in lot coverage. And we have a section of our, of our zoning code that requires 25% of that lot to remain open. So we've kind of combined those two in a way, and settled on 75 is not significantly different than 50. And we've, I mean, that's kind of where we landed on these infill projects in the core. Certainly, six buildings is more lot coverage than, you know, one home or 50%, but...
Okay, thank you. I, I would, if your client is able and agreeable, like to take some time and meet with the neighbors on this one.
Yeah, why don't we do June 13?
Mr. Chairman, I had just a comment for them to be thinking about, too, is that I guess is the urban medium density, is it 20 to 40? Is that right?
Yes, I think 40 is the upper limit.
So that's, this is precedent. At 35, it's...
Oh, 10 to 40.
We don't have a different rule for if you're on a corner or not, but to me, the 20 to 40 means some spots should be closer to 20, some it might be more appropriate to be closer to 40. With this not being a corner lot, I think closer to 40 is too many. 35 is a lot of dwelling units per acre right there.
I will take that into consideration.
See you in two weeks.
I'm going to move a continuance of item number 12, SPOD 1615, until June 13.
I have a motion from Commissioner Powers to continue the item of the June 13 meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. That item is continued.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks.
You're going to see me right now.
Three. All right, item 13.
Item 13 is case SPOD 1617, application to rezone 1228 Northwest 48th Street from SPOD 680.
Before we, before you go, excuse me, before you go, get my phone number from Sarah Welch right there if you would and feel free to call me. Thank you, sorry. Sorry.
All right, okay. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Gary Holmesy, who's here with us as well. This is another infill project in Ward 2. He actually is, the thing that says office immediately west of this is his law office. So we are on 48th, just east of Classen. It's a vacant lot. It's zoned right now, SPOD 680. SPOD 680 allows for office development. So we submitted the SPOD to allow for three duplexes, six units, and we had a deferral to allow for a neighborhood meeting. We were able to have that meeting. We discussed a handful of things and I think we're able to come to a resolution. One of the things, ironically, if the commission will recall, the 30th and Hudson discussion, where there was a belief that street parking was bad. These neighbors actually wanted parking on the street because, of course, they're public streets and that's where people can park. So we have amended the SPOD to reduce what can be done on the front to just two and it's a may use two. Other than that, I believe the neighbors are satisfied that rather than office, we're going to be adding some necessary rental units in the area. So I know I did see Cassidy Smith-Tolliver here, so she may have signed up to speak, but we did submit to them the revised SPOD as well as Commissioner Powers. And my understanding is that the neighbors are satisfied with the changes to the SPOD. No technical evaluations, happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Powers?
Has someone signed up to speak?
Yeah, Ms. Cassidy Smith-Tolliver.
Hello. My name is Cassidy Smith-Tolliver. I am the president of the Home Farm Neighborhood Association and I live at 1216 Northwest 42nd. Y'all see us a lot. Again, we have a reputation for being difficult. However, we feel that Mr. Holmesy and David worked with us and we're actually pretty satisfied with this. So given the fact that we did ask for continuance, we wanted to let you know we're fine with it. I will say the on-street parking is a little different here because it does abut that office space and considering every duplex has like a garage, a couple streets on, or carpool cars on the street here and there are not anything different than when Mariposa Med Spa hosts like a Botox giveaway once a year and our neighborhood is packed. We are thankful, it looks like because of this, it did increase the green space, which is something we were obviously concerned about. The only thing that I did have a complaint about is the 26-foot wide, right? Because it's not screened fully, but it looks like there's enough landscaping to where it shouldn't matter. But that was the only complaint that neighbors had brought forth with the amendments.
The width of the driveway?
Not the width of the driveway, the way that the driveway is prominent, but I know that that entry gate shouldn't be there. Okay, yeah, so that entry gate's not going to be there. So the only thing some people didn't want to see was just that wide driveway, but other than that, that was just like a minor thing that I think honestly, the most of the project is something we can get behind. It's just the way that it's prominent. But since it's behind a business and it's not in the middle of a block, I don't think it's such a big deal. So we're actually fine with this one, Commissioner.
Well, we certainly appreciate you taking the time to meet and compliment the applicant. I was actually remembering that one of the first cases that I had as a new planning commissioner was an application to rezone this property to allow for expansion of the office use, I think. And I was all for it and my fellow commissioners at that time, who'd all been serving much longer than I had, were not in favor of that. And as a result, it has sat vacant all these years. So I must say, I'm very, very pleased to see it being developed residentially. This is a wonderful thing for the neighborhood, I think. It's a very thoughtful development. I'm happy with it, so.
I just wanted to point out the similarities to the last case. This happens, it's closer to, the difference being, this is immediately behind the commercial corridor on Classen, whereas the other one has several lots into the block. This is also half as dense, right? So this is six units versus 12 units on similar sort of two-lot-wide space. Not that that has any real bearing on it, but, and also I'd like to say, a colored site plan showing all that green sure helps people see the difference between lot coverage and open space. So maybe the previous applicant should color their site plan if they come back.
Well, with respect to colored site plans, I will just remind you that those are pretty pictures, right?
Yes, yes, good point.
It's the text that controls and I think here it spells out what's going to be built and I think it is sufficiently tight, I'll put it that way. If nobody else has anything else they want to share or comments or questions, I will move approval of item number 13, SPOD 1617.
I have a motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend approval of City Council of SPOD 1617. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item passes. Item 14.
This is SPOD 1622, application to rezone 10525 Southwest 29th Street from R1 and PUD 1149.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, this is kind of a strange parcel created by the turnpike. My client operates a credit union, so what the SPOD would allow is a credit union right there on the corner. Worth noting, if you're familiar with the area, to the west of this site, we recently got approved and on cue to the west of that was some commercial multi-family and then you have a Brahms at the adjacent corner. So we believe to be consistent with the area. Light commercial following rooftops is a good thing. No technical evaluations. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Meek, this is your ward?
Yes, I've spoke with the applicant. Staff has recommended approval. We don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, do we?
We do not.
Busy area, but got to have some credit unions and banks. It looks like a good use for the property and if nobody, no other commissioners have any comments, I'm in support of it and would recommend approval of SPOD 1622.
I have a motion from Commissioner Meek to recommend approval of City Council of SPOD 1622. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item passes. Takes us to item 15.
This is SPOD 1624, application to rezone 1147 Northwest 41st Street from R1.
Good afternoon, Claus Raymond Phillips, 281 North Hudson. I'm representing Omega Investments in their application to rezone this property to allow for three single-family houses on this lot. And staff recommended approval, no TEs. We had a, I thought, really positive conversation with the neighbors in which we made quite a few changes to the MDS along with Commissioner Powers as well. And so, yeah, I'd open up any questions.
Commissioner Powers, this is Ward 2.
This was another very cooperative meeting with the neighbors, the neighborhood. The applicant was flexible in a number of areas that they and I were concerned about and I think we have reached a good result. I'm pretty sure someone signed up to speak.
Yes, Ms. Cassidy Smith-Tolliver.
You're never going to believe it, but you're going to see us in a couple of weeks. My name is Cassidy Smith-Tolliver, 1216 Northwest 42nd. I'm the president of Home Farm. We, for the most part, are okay with this one, but there is one change that we had mentioned in that meeting and I got a lot of feedback about. Probably March, April, there was a case that was heard, a SPOD directly to the south of this one. So right there, you see that big, like between 40th and 41st? Yeah, that one. They are putting in six and we worked on that one. One thing that we did request in there that was easy to get, on SPOD 1590, it's surrounded mostly by one stories. So the middle height was limited to like 20, 28 feet. A lot of the neighbors, in fact, every house except for one catty corner on this SPOD is one story and at a max of 35 feet with a pitch and it seems like the ability to finish out that attic is an additional bonus space, neighbors are not happy. The new ADU language, if you were building an ADU back there, once that passes, the max height's going to be 25 feet. So we don't think it is in line here, especially with one stories surrounding it, to have three 35-foot tall properties even at pitch. It seems aggressive. We saw it happen at SPOD 1131 down on 40th. It is a mistake that we wish we would not have made as a community. They are aggressive, they are tall, people do not feel like they have privacy. And again, with the upcoming ADU standards, it really doesn't make sense to allow them to have like 35-foot tall roofs in the back and others not to. I know in the, another application I saw that's coming up in a couple of weeks, it actually talks about back homes behind what would be a primary along an artillery, artillery street like that would need to be smaller in conformance. So we would just ask that those roof lines come down. I know, I know that there's, you know, discussion about how you need six feet to build and, but we just think it's too tall. I hope that made sense.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Powers?
Well, my thinking on this is sort of several-layered. This is, this piece of property is like steps away from a major bus terminal thing on Classen. This is really not an ADU situation. We're talking about rezoning for three single-family units. Any R1 house can be 35 feet tall. So I'm less concerned here about that than I might be in other places. Although I would be happy to hear if there are other thoughts that commissioners would like to share on the topic.
I think it's a valid point and I was going to ask, because I don't actually understand how to interpret the statement, that attic space above the second floor may be built out without area or wall height limitations. I want to just understand what that is supposed to, what you think it means.
So architect to architect.
On a previous project, we had a two-story house that had a gable roof. We wanted to build out the attic and the way the municipal code is written, you know, for two and a half stories, specifically a half-story, you know, you have to have a, for the maximum building height was three feet. So if you imagine, if you're building an attic and you have a like vertical wall that's three feet, it's not really usable and they were giving us a hard time or the way they were interpreting it, they wouldn't allow us to do basically a smaller attic with taller walls, you wouldn't bang your head on the, you know, on the gable. So we, really all we wanted to do is allow for or avoid a potential, you know, conflict with development services when we go for a building permit. We just wanted to build out the attic basically. So the form of the house, massing of the house, you know, we're happy to have the typical single-family residential, you know, two, two and a half stories, 35 feet building height. Actually, these won't even be, you know, the way it's measured, they'll be less than 35 feet on the, the way it's measured. But we wanted the ability to build out the attic, you know, without issues.
There's, there's no, that is not in any way impact the exterior form or massing or roof height or pitch or anything. It's purely a building permit issue inside the space. That's what I wanted to hear you say.
And Commissioner Powers, we kind of, we worked the language a few different ways and the staff as well. We, we think about the best way to word that, you know. On one hand, like I initially came with the language to offer three stories, but, you know, for no flat roofs and then, you know, so we've, it's kind of gone through a few iterations to where, you know, it's a two-story building, you know. Formally, it's the same, you know, from a massing standpoint, it's the same as what would be allowed, but, yeah. Build out that.
The other thing about the impact on surrounding properties I meant to mention is that, you know, no rooftop balconies or no rooftop decks, no balconies, pitch drift, so. You can blame me for that. I didn't want to go three stories. I wanted to find a way to try to say what they really wanted and, you know, that's...
And we're pretty, you know, we're sure what kind of development we want. So we added, you know, to help assure the neighbors that what we were planning on developing is what we're actually showing. We, you know, we added some extra language into the MDS, limiting the north two houses to under 2,000 square foot, you know. So we added some other provisions kind of to assure the neighbors that what we're showing is what we're actually going to build.
Okay, are we ready for our motion?
I am, if everybody else is. I'll move approval of item number 15, SPOD 1624.
Commissioner Powers recommends approval to City Council of item SPOD 1624. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Are we going to...
I didn't mean to do that.
Adjust the motion? Commissioner Powers made the motion.
We're going to have to start over, Jimmy.
As long as you hit approve and not deny.
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Powers and a second by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
All right, appreciate it. I want to say I appreciate Commissioner Powers for helping facilitate the meeting and Cassidy Smith as well. I don't know if she's still here, but, you know, I thought we had productive meetings and it was good to have some feedback and some good back and forth and it resulted in approved SPODs.
I agree and it's just one more example of how you can work things out if you just get together and sit down and talk base to base, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16.
This is SPOD 1626, application to rezone 4127 Northwest 36th Street from R1 and O2.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application that would allow for a modified light industrial I-1 development. The primary use is a beef jerky manufacturing facility. We worked with Commissioner Powers on the deletion of many uses that would otherwise be allowed in I-1. It's a fairly long list that we've deleted. There are three TEs. We agree with TE 1 and 2. We can't agree to TE 3, the way that the site is oriented, placing all of the doors to the north simply won't work. So if you're familiar with the area, if you've driven down 36th Street, you would have noticed that a lot of the industrial to the east also has doors that are visible from 36th. So we don't believe it to be a massively impactful request. So we agree to TE 1 and 2 and we do not agree to TE 3.
So on this point, from, from the exhibit that's included, what we're really talking about here are, they're not going to face south. They will be visible because that's, as you're driving down 36th, you see them, but they don't actually face south, do they?
Well, you have, the way that it's drawn, you, there are doors that face south.
That little door is a garage door?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, that's not ideal, but there are garage doors that face south along this stretch of road. This is a very strange, I'm sorry, were you finished talking?
I am now.
This is a very odd thing because... This is a very odd thing, because, you know, normally, you would think commercial would be preferable to industrial, but the actual nature of this area and the way it's developed, I am not crazy about the idea of introducing commercial uses down this stretch of 36th Street. And industrial use or light industrial use like this, I think is much better suited to this piece of property. So much so that I've kind of suggested that whatever commercial uses are allowed are accessory to the I-2, the I-1 use, or limited in size. I think we've landed unlimited in size. I really, eventually, probably, commercial will bleed down from 39th Street this far, but it's, it's gonna be a long time coming, because this is a pretty well-established industrial area right here.
Well, this, this is an area that I, I drive through pretty frequently. You've got, you've got a brewery over there, even a couple of small, I won't say restaurants, but eating establishment-type places. Having, you know, I, having look at the industrial that's along there, I mean, I, I think the commercial is a little bit more appealing.
I don't agree with that, because I don't want to, I don't want to see the signage and all that comes with that. You know, I, this is directly across the street from residential uses, and I think, you know, a kind of use that's come and go during the day is just very different from a full-blown retail, so, or even, even the brewery, you know, it's, it's almost oriented toward the north.
Well, yeah, it fronts Tulsa, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm pretty happy with where we are. What did we decide on the limitation of the retail?
20,000 square feet.
And I have almost zero ability to gauge how big that is, but I think I'm happy with it. I mean, just like, based on the size of this room, you know? I, I am more concerned about other things, I guess, than that specific point, and therefore am willing to compromise. I'm very pleased to see a number of uses removed, including the fast foods and those kind of things. So, I'm okay with where we are. Does anybody else feel differently?
No.
If not, I'm gonna move approval of item number 16, SPD 1626, with the...
Deletion of TE 3.
And?
The addition of TE 4, limiting the retail to 20,000 square feet.
So be it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend approval of City Council of SPD 1626. It's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. That item passes. Item 17.
Item 17 is Case SPD 1627, application to rezone 13010 West Reno Avenue from C3 to MPUD 1068.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The SPD before you is to mirror the language and regulations as contained in spud 1309. My client also owns spud 1309 tract, which allows for multifamily, so it's, all it's doing is combining the two into a common zoning district. Happy to answer any questions, there are no technical evaluations.
Mr. Meek, this is Ward 3.
Yes. I spoke to the applicant and did verify that, that it does match the spud 1309 that was done in 2021. Do we have anyone signed up to speak regarding this?
No.
Anybody else have any concerns that they see? Okay. With that, I would move to recommend approval of SPD 1627.
Commissioner Meek moves to recommend approval of City Council of SPD 1627. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. Commissioner La Forge? Thank you. That item passes. Item 18.
This is SPD 1628, application to rezone 1231 Northwest 33rd Street from R1.
One last time. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an application to bring into conformance a multifamily structure that's been there for approximately 100 years, for reasons that are unknown. It's zoned R1. So, what this SPD would do is to allow for the historic use of the site to be brought into zoning conformance. No technical evaluations. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Powers, this is Ward 2.
It's all about me today.
It really is.
Is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, I do not have anyone signed up to speak.
I'm almost, it's almost too, is the applicant actually here by any chance?
No, just their proxy.
Well, the reason I ask, this property has been significantly improved in its appearance and upgraded over the last few years, so I'm very pleased about that. This is just welcome to Ward 2. There is property all over Ward 2 that is not zoned the way it's used, and this is just one of those things. This is a completely appropriate kind of application. We are gonna add a TE, though, because it's not gonna have any signs. So, if everybody's okay with that, I'm gonna move approval of item number 18, SPD 1628, with the addition of one TE indicating there'll be no signs.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Powers to recommend approval of SPD 1618 with the added technical evaluation. And that has been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item passes. Thank you. Item 19 has been continued. Item 20.
Item 20 is to introduce and set for recommendation a public hearing on June 13th. It proposed ordinance to consolidate the city's five existing design review bodies into the Downtown Design Review Commission and the Urban Design Commission.
Michael Philbrick, Senior Planner with the current Planning and Urban Design Division of the Planning Department. The purpose of the ordinance amendment is to reconfigure the design review process by consolidating the number of design review bodies in the city from five down to two, and reassigning which bodies will be responsible for design review in the multiple design districts that exist today. The impetus for this consolidation is rooted in the outset of the city's efforts to craft a comprehensive update to the city's development-related codes. Early in this effort, interest was expressed by stakeholders, staff, and the code update consultants to make the design review process more efficient by streamlining these reviews through just two design review bodies instead of five. As constructed, the design ordinance, the draft ordinance would eliminate the Bricktown Urban Design Committee, the Riverfront Design Committee, and the Stockyards City Urban Design Committee, and reassign responsibility for the design reviews in those design districts to the two remaining bodies, the Downtown Design Review Commission and the Urban Design Commission. The existing design review districts, their existing boundaries, and the development regulations and design guidelines they contain would remain intact as they are today. The responsibility for the design reviews would be shifted from those design review bodies being eliminated to the two remaining bodies. The Downtown Design Review Commission would assume responsibility for the design review efforts in the Bricktown Core Development District, and the Urban Design Commission would assume responsibility for the design review efforts in the Stockyards City Development District, the Stockyards City Transitional Development Overlay, and all of the Scenic River Overlay Design Districts. These changes would reduce the standard number of design review meetings per year from 52 to 24, and additionally, the number of community volunteers needed to staff these commissions would be reduced from 37 to 18. These reassignments were based primarily on geographic proximity and an effort to balance out the number of cases to be heard by the two remaining bodies based on recent trends in the number of design review cases that are being filed and reviewed over the past few years. In addition to reassigning responsibility for the design review districts, the ordinance also renames the Downtown Design Review Committee to the Downtown Design Review Commission so that the commission, the two commissions have the same title at their end. It also increases the number of members on the Downtown Design Review Commission from seven, which is currently what they have, to nine, so that both commissions would also have nine members. And additionally, it would establish new membership criteria for the commissions, primarily for the purpose of opening up opportunities for members or representatives of the design review districts that are being eliminated, or the bodies that are being eliminated to have representation on the two new bodies, or the two existing bodies that are being retained. The Oklahoma River, Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority and all five of the impacted design review bodies have reviewed the draft ordinance, and all five have unanimously recommended approval to the Planning Commission. I did want to point out to you that the copy of the draft ordinance that is in your packet includes two yellow highlighted areas, and that was an oversight that should have been removed from the document before it was put in the packet. Those two highlighted areas were placeholders for us, to remind us that those provisions that were being included in this ordinance were covered by the recently adopted sign code. And we were supposed to have, since the sign code was adopted and those two provisions were taken care of with that adoption, these two highlighted areas should have been removed from this document, and they will be the next time you see it for recommendation to the council. That completes my presentation. I am prepared to respond to any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioners, have any questions?
I think this makes a lot of sense. I mean, when you, when you look at the number of commissions and committees and the work that goes in to prepare packets and agendas and do all that, I, I'm all for streamlining,
Particularly if the commissions themselves are in, in full support, that, that seems, that's good enough for me.
My only question is, and maybe it's because I'm a novice to these, but before it seemed clear, now it seems, I get consolidating. Why two instead of one? What are the different boundaries? And I can't tell what's what. Now, we have a Downtown Design Review Commission and an Urban Design Commission. Why does one say "Review Commission," the other one doesn't have the word "review"? What's the difference between downtown and urban? Like, before, I knew what riverfront was, I knew what stockyards was, I knew what Bricktown was, I knew what the riverfront, I mean, I knew what these were, but so now you've got two left, and I don't know the difference. How's the public know, oh, I need to go to the Downtown Design Review Commission? Oh, wait, no, I need to go to the Urban Design Commission. They sound the same to me. If you're going from five to two, why not five to one? Right, right, right. So, is it, why, why not down to one? And then, everybody would know there's just one, and that's the one you go to.
That's an option that really wasn't considered. We, we do, we do think that the, there's a symbiotic relationship between the Downtown Design Review Districts and Bricktown, and it makes sense to combine those into the one. I think that if we were to put all five design review districts under the review of one body, that would probably be resulting, maybe, some agendas that are even longer than your meetings sometimes. And I think that we've tried to separate these and combine them in a logical way that makes sense to give an opportunity for the staff level involvement in the agenda packet assembly and so on and so forth. And the way that the, the projects or the, the, the design review bodies have been divided between the two remaining bodies makes sense from a standpoint of having the workloads between the two bodies make a lot more sense. So, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, and it's, it's related to the nature of, I mean, they both do design review, of course, but there's downtown, and then the other commission covers everything else. And so, kind of smaller districts, and, you know, if there were future design review districts that might occur elsewhere, they would, they would go to that one.
So, I might be late to the game then, but I wonder if it shouldn't be the downtown slash Bricktown? That's one. The other one could be urban, and everybody would know it's everything but downtown and Bricktown, which are adjacent, and maybe it would be clear to the public. And then, maybe, if there's not a difference between a review commission, a design review commission, and a design commission, then maybe they should be the same. So, thinking like downtown slash Bricktown design review, and then urban design review. Because I get what you're saying, there, there's the core, the downtown and the Bricktown, they're together, and everything else is the ex, you know, stock, out in the stockyards out in the riverfront. Just trying to set it up so there's not, I'd be confused. Even though I follow the city a lot, I would not know the difference between these two. And I could be confused with these two new names.
Sure.
Sorry if I'm late to the game with that. I think I missed the study committee.
They went over it a lot there that day.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries. We, we can look at the, the names and see if it would, you know, maybe a slight adjustment there would be more, more clarifying.
My thought was the function y'all have done, it probably, it makes a lot of sense. Five to two, not one. I get what you're saying, long agendas, another way. It's just the naming convention, I think, that ended up confusing. I can, you know.
Yeah, I hear where you're coming from, Commissioner, as well. Is there really a need to distinguish Bricktown from downtown? Like, I get it, it's a district in downtown, but we have other districts downtown as well that are commonly referred to, but that one doesn't bother me. I feel like it's, it's intuitive enough. Downtown is, is its own thing, while the, you know, the urban core, while urban and downtown might be synonymous to some people's minds, it's, it's all the urban area, but downtown is a subset, because it's unique in its, in the way the buildings are built on those sites. That's, that's very different than Stockyard City or some of the Scenic River areas that are currently under their purview. And I get the caseload point, where there's just not that many cases in, in that small area of Bricktown. And probably, there'll be, as it gets built out more and more, there's fewer and fewer, maybe, but, so anyways. I kind of get it, but I also work in Bricktown and do a lot of stuff downtown, so I'm used to, I'm used to hearing those all the time.
I do agree with Commissioner La Forge that, why the word "review" stay, stayed in one but not the other? It could have been Downtown Design Commission and Urban Design Commission.
I would agree. That almost suggests that one does something slightly different than the other, you know?
One does more than the other, right.
That makes sense to me.
Right.
And although I hadn't thought of it at all before, I think the, the inclusion of the word "Bricktown" in the one title is, is probably, you know, a, a good acknowledgement of the slightly different aspect that Bricktown has from the rest of downtown. I mean, it's all right here, but, you know, it, it is sort of its own thing, so I'm okay with that.
Right.
Okay, take care of that, will you?
And to be clear, I don't think, certainly, I didn't, I don't think anybody's arguing with the functionality of the five to two.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Limiteded gen, is all that makes sense.
Initially, I was very skeptical, but they, the fact that, that they, that the board's continuous unanimously approved it, I, I was surprised by that. I know we have a terrible, terribly hard time finding people to serve on these commissions and committees, and, you know, the fewer people we have to go out and, and convince that they really want to take on this rewarding work, you know, probably the better off we'll be, have, you know, more people who actually are able to attend on a regular basis and so on, so I think that's all good.
Couple, like, adding two from seven to nine adds a bit of flexibility there, too, on it.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll look at the, the names and come back and, you know, if there's any reason not to. I will say, if we add Bricktown, commonly is referred to as DDRC, which kind of rolls out the tongue, when if we say DDBRC, it's not, not, not quite as easy, but there's, there's that, but we'll, we'll talk about it.
All right, anything else? If not, I need a motion to set this for public hearing on June 13th.
I'll go ahead and move...
Sorry, microphone. Move to set the item for public hearing on June 13th.
The motion from Commissioner Goveen to set the item for public hearing on June 13th. I have a second.
Have a second.
Sorry, I'm trying to get.
Come on.
I don't have a motion yet.
Yeah. We're buffering. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And that item passes. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is to introduce and set for recommendation at a public hearing on June thirteenth, a proposed ordinance amending the Bricktown Core Development District, Downtown Design Districts, and Stockyard City Development District to allow certain urban agriculture uses as conditional uses.
In 2013, an ordinance amendment was adopted to add several use units related to urban agriculture uses to zoning districts across the city. At that time, this effort did not include the three downtown design review districts, the Bricktown Core District, or the Stockyard City Development District. Recently, staff has coordinated with property owners and other stakeholders to determine the appropriateness of allowing these uses in those districts. The proposed ordinance amendment would add these urban ag uses, including community gardens, greenhouses, home gardens, hoop houses, rainwater harvesting, roof gardens, and urban farms, as conditional uses in the DTD, DBD District, the DTD One District, DTD Two, the Bricktown Core, and the SYT Development District. The ordinance also clarifies language related to requirements for structures or buildings that are accessory to a use that would not normally require a primary structure. The ordinance amendment retains existing standards for building materials and fencing, as well as the requirement for a certificate of approval for these urban ag uses. The ordinance was introduced as a city, at the city council in April and remanded back to the applicable design review committees for consideration. The draft ordinance has been reviewed by both the Downtown Design Review Committee and the Stockyards Urban Design Committee, and both bodies recommended approval of the ordinance to the Planning Commission. The Bricktown Urban Design Committee is set to review and provide a recommendation on this ordinance at their next meeting on June twelfth. The proposed ordinance would add community gardens, greenhouses, home gardens, hoop houses, rainwater harvesting, roof gardens, and urban farms as conditional uses, including the applicable use standards for those uses to the Downtown Design Review Districts, the Stockyards Committee, City Development District, and the Bricktown Core Development District. That concludes my presentation for you this afternoon. I'm prepared to respond to any questions the commission may have.
I, you know, I noted that you said that we had previously applied this elsewhere but hadn't included these areas. How's it going with where it is in place?
I'm sorry?
Did I, did I understand you to say that we have previously allowed these uses elsewhere but hadn't simply had any-
In 2013, yes.
How's that going?
We haven't had any, as my, to my knowledge, we haven't had any problems with those uses because they do have in chapter nine of the, of section of chapter fifty-nine, a set of variety of various use standards that apply to these uses that apparently are working effectively to keep them under control and make them effectively coordinate and complement the surrounding land uses.
Okay. Well, then-
I've spoken with Councilperson Hammond about this, this item in the past a couple times, and I know she's in support. It made sense to me, I, I like it. I'm, I'm also in support, so I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know if there's other questions or concerns about it, but I don't think we've seen an explosion of community gardens either as a result of what was passed in 2013, so, but I think they're a good thing if, if people are interested in doing them. So you said the, the one, Bricktown hasn't heard this yet, but the other Scenic River Overlay has, recommended approval?
Yeah, they, they are, well, the, the Scenic River is an overlay, so the uses are set primarily by the base zoning district in those areas that are covered by Scenic River, so.
Or yeah, or so, okay, the, the two committees that have already heard this-
Right, so these are, these three that we're talking about today, they're all hard base zoning districts that were not included. And I suspect the reason they were done, it was not included at that time, in 2020, in 2013, excuse me, is that it was presumed at that time that perhaps the land values were too high to put in something like a garden as opposed to a development. And I think it's important to remember that even going forward, if these uses are starting to, start to come into some of these high-value land areas, they're probably going to be temporary or interim uses that would, you know, sit and, and provide some sort of income for the property owners on an interim basis until a more permanent, long-term development proposal would come in, into play.
I will move to, let's see, move to set the item for hearing at June thirteenth? Okay, that's the motion.
Commissioner Gauvine sets to, moves to set the item for public hearing on June thirteenth. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. That item passes. Item twenty-two.
This is a recommendation on a proposed ordinance amending the downtown design districts by adding additional types of signs to be prohibited within a defined area around the
Good afternoon, Lisa Cronister, Assistant Planning Director. Yes, you heard this ordinance about a month ago, and this is the final hearing. It's to add certain sign types to the list of signs that are prohibited within the area around the Oklahoma City National Memorial to more fully coordinate with the new sign code. I understand at the last meeting, there was discussion about the boundaries, especially the boundary on the east side, if it should capture both sides of Broadway Avenue. We ask that we be allowed to study all the boundaries later on in the code update, but for the purposes of this ordinance, to just add these sign types to the area.
We did talk about that quite a bit, and I just wanted to, a point of clarification, because I, I raised the issue, was, I was suggesting actually moving it back to the alley to encompass neither side of Broadway.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes, yeah, the intent being to have the same sign regs for both sides of Broadway, which makes complete sense.
Which wouldn't include this specific district. Anyway, that, that was what I think makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Just in my view, but, but in any case, I also understand the, the need to, to move forward as it is. So you're saying that that will be looked at, and this boundary will be reviewed for its appropriateness at a later date?
Yes.
So I guess I'm, I'm satisfied with that. I don't know if anyone else has any items to discuss.
Lisa, when, I mean, do we have any idea when that review might be done? I know we said a future date, but that could be two weeks or two years or ten years.
It'll be at least a year. It'll be sometime. We've been concentrating our code update work on the core, except downtown.
I, I mean, what would the, the implications of this would be, if somebody on Broadway wants one of these sign types, then they would have, then, then they would get kicked back saying, you can't do that there, then they would be required to apply, with, go through a variance process or something, if this happened before the boundary was reviewed.
Yes.
I, I mean, I don't think it's a great burden, I, I think there's probably still a vehicle for them to get that done, that we would be sympathetic to their cause if they showed up here and we were talking about that sign, so that's why I don't have a problem with this, but. No one else?
Nope, ready for a motion.
Let's move to approve item number twenty-two. I'm sorry, I didn't get the right number. Yeah, move, move approval.
Commissioner Gauvine moves to recommend approval of the ordinance to city council. That's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. That item passes. That concludes all the individual items for, for consideration, and we go, move on to additional items, and communications and reports, planning commission committees, none that I'm aware of, planning commission members.
I have quite a few things on my mind today, but I'm going to narrow it down to just one, based on our last item. And it has come to my attention recently that, that pole signs are still a thing. I was driving down Western the other day, and there's a new HTO there, which my husband is very happy about, south of 50th Street, within our little commercial district there. It's a very low-key commercial district, but they have a pole sign out front. Now, they didn't have to come to us for any kind of approval, it's probably C4 zoning based on the bizarre pattern of that kind of development in Ward Two. But then I have another case that's actually on Classen Boulevard, and it's the reuse of an existing office structure, and the first thing I told the applicant's representative was, in, no signs. And they were perfectly happy about that, but they informed me that they would be entitled to a pole sign. I thought we got away, I thought we did away with pole signs. And what was all that work for on, on the sign code? I, I would like for you to look into that for me, please, that maybe I don't understand the sign code as well as I thought I did, but, yeah, not, not going for that.
So, yes, the, there was, early on, some discussion about what do we do about pole signs. Where, where we landed was that you could still do a pole sign, but you get more square footage, more height, if you do a monument sign. We had sign industry and property owners say, well, you know, monument signs are great, but sometimes I don't have the room I need, and also, wouldn't you want a pole sign because you can see around them easier? So they, they brought up the safety issue as well. So there was still a lot of, a lot of push for pole signs. So, you know, you know, we could go back and say, hey, we just want to nix pole signs altogether, but that's not something that was-
If our desire is to get rid of PUDs and SPODs- And/or stop using PUDs and SPODs to either increase or limit signage, I, this is a big deal to me, so.
Sure. And they, they, right now, with the new, adoption of the new code, nobody's allowed to use a putt or a spud to get anything more than the base code would allow, so.
So what, we don't want to go around using them to keep people from having as much sign industry that would otherwise be entitled to, so. The other side of that coin, I would really like to see us look at that hard.
Well, we, so we can certainly do that because we, we knew, we inserted the sign code into the existing code, so we knew that we would have to come back to it at some point. As you all know, we had to do the sign code when we did, for legal reasons and other reasons, but we know that once the new code's adopted, we have to amend the sign code to, and it, it, you know, doesn't take much massaging, we have to, you know, change the zoning districts and so on, but it will remain intact. We can, I'm, I'm making a note now to, to look at that, because, and anything else related to the sign code, certainly, we've got a, we've got a small list. Once you, once you adopt a code, you know that you're going to have to go in and make, do some cleanup, so, I mean, this would be a, a big deal, we'd have to go and, you know, kind of re-engage the sign industry, but we can certainly do that when we bring it back for kind of version two point-
I mean, yeah, once, once you go through the process of amending something like a sign code, people out in the world believe it's now, you know, cast in stone, and so it is a big deal. It is, it's not easy to, to make changes, and I understand that, but-
But something like that would just be kind of a single issue, it's a whole lot easier to deal with than cracking open the whole sign code, so. And the other, the other things that we have are just kind of cleanups and clarification, so.
Okay.
Well, we'll put that on the list.
Thank you. I'll, I'll check that one off my list of things to talk about, and-
Don't hit me, Janice, but when my company built that HTO, it was not rezoned.
No, I, I-
It was a gas station that had been abandoned for a long time, and it carried the ability to have that pole sign. What I didn't, wasn't aware of, until we did our final inspection on it, that that pole sign requirement carries a large addition of landscape points, that if you do the pole sign, you have to add a whole bunch of landscape, and we, we almost missed a grand opening ribbon cutting, you know, just to get landscape redone. So, and it is a site issue when you're pouring that kind of, you know, all the drive-throughs and multiple lanes, and, and a monument sign would be a site, triangle access, you know, on and off the Northwestern, it would have been pretty rough there, but, yeah, I think this one just, you're going to have zoning types that carry the, the ability to have that without modifying the code. I don't have anything else as far as that, we do have Plan, what's it called, a Plan Zero meeting on-
Yeah, I think it's June fourth, third.
Vision Zero meeting on June third, coming up, or meeting number two, otherwise, that's all I've got.
Commissioner Newman?
I'm good.
All right. Commissioner Gauvine?
Well, just, one thing I've learned today is, so that place is pronounced H-T-O. I was wondering what it is and what they sell. T, okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me, because I've seen it, I just haven't been to one. We have been having, there's been some community meetings on accessory dwelling units. Commissioner Powers is, is well aware, there was one Tuesday night. There were, I think it was good discussion, it's good feedback from, from the community. There were mentions of other meetings that are happening, and I am happy to be involved in those, and, and I want to hear more. I don't know when they are, and one of them, I think, was mentioned on the 28th, which I'll be out of, is next week, I'm out of town. So I just wanted to mention that, that if there's other meetings that are being made aware of, please shoot me an email or text or something, and I will try to make them as, as many as I can, if, if useful, that's all.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner La Forge? I don't have anything. Planning Department?
Just, we'll, we'll send you information. We have, there are some organizations that are, like, you know, the, the meeting last night was one of the neighborhood boards that invited us, but we're having a, a larger one that's just kind of all, everybody who wants to, to talk about accessory dwellings specifically in HP or HL districts, and I'll get you the information, I'll send you that, we've got an email that, that I can send to you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's on the fourth, but I need to confirm that. We wanted to get that done so we could have something to report back, and whoever's interested and, and you guys, we'll send it to all of you so you can spread the word as needed. It's going to go, if it hasn't already, it'll go out soon with, with all of the city broadcasting, I guess, so that we can get the word out, because we'd like to hear from everyone. We, we know through our surveys and other work that there are a lot of people do support these in historic districts. Of course, there's a lot of vocal kind of protest, or, you know, people who disagree with them, so I'll get that information out. And that's, that's all I have.
Municipal Counselor's Office, nothing. Next item, citizens to be heard. See none? Any other business? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.